Hey, this is Malika of Evanston Live TV and I have with me today a District 65 school board candidate in Dona, Mumbai. Did I say that right?
Mu-bu-yai.
Mu-bu-yai. Did I say it right? You're laughing. Say it one more time.
Mu-bu-yai.
Mu-bu-yai.
Like mu-boy-yai.
Mu-boy-yai.
Yes.
Got it, got it. I call you in Dona. So. I call you in Dona. Welcome back. Actually, I've had you on the show before. You had invited me to a really interesting event in the past, wanting to teach Evanstonians French. So you had hooked up this whole livestream with people over in France and I just thought it was such an, and you had the French cheese and everything. It was such.
And the wine.
And the wine, yes, yes. It was a very interesting event. So you are no stranger to Evanston Live TV, so welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
And now you are running for District 65.
Yeah.
Yes. That is serious, especially now, all the controversy that's going on with District 65. I know Dr. Horton and President Anya Tanya Vudi, they have been really going through it and.
Yeah.
Really working hard to bring about change and really wanting to look out for the children of color. And now they're receiving death threats because of their efforts, their work. What are your thoughts on that?
That's actually one of the reasons, well, I have multiple reasons why I decided to run, but that's one of the reasons. I think I'd mentioned to you before, you know, I grew up here and all of the controversy that's taking place now, I had never experienced all the years of growing up here in Evanston. And then when I moved away, I was living in New York City for many years and then I moved up to Canada for many years. And when I decided to come back to the States and move back home in 2018, all of a sudden I was bombarded with so many negative things that were taking place here in Evanston. And a lot of them were, had to do with race. You know, I went to Haven, I also went to Lincolnwood. And my daughter, when we first returned here, my daughter went to Haven. And there were so many conversations about children not feeling safe, not feeling safe because they felt as if they were going to be aggressed by classmates. There were children at Lincolnwood who were using the N-word towards black children. Then there was, there were also some issues of colorism taking place at Lincolnwood amongst black children. There were instances where children were being handcuffed and removed from school, little black children at Lincolnwood. Then on to Haven, there were similar issues at Haven, not so much so the, you know, the racial slurs and things of that nature, but there, the PTA at Haven had a history of excluding black parents. And I said, you know, I was told this by a parent group of black women whose children go to Family Focus. So I had a chance to speak with them at their, their meeting and they all said to me, we've tried and they, they feel as if they're not wanted. There are even times that they would change the date of the meetings and never tell them the new date. So I started my own investigation and I started to go to the PTA meetings at Haven. I became a member. And after going a few times, one of the women, I'm not going to name her, she said to me, you know, you're, you're different. And I said, what do you mean? You know, you just, she said, you know, you, we can be, you know, very comfortable around you. You're really different. But can I ask you a candid question? And I said, sure, go right ahead. She said, why don't the black parents want to come to the PTA? And I said, well, I do know that there are many black parents that want to come to the PTA. And I said, how, I said, how about I do this? I can recruit more black parents whose children come to Haven to start to participate in the, in the PTA. So they said, oh, that's amazing. We would love that. So I reached out to, you know, people that I knew here in Evanston, former classmates, young parents who were at, who were taking their children to Family Focus. I recruited about 25 black parents who wanted to participate in the PTA at Haven. And when they all tried to go on the website to register, because you had to pay $25 in order to join, and without paying the $25, you would not be able to participate in the meetings. So once I let the then-principal know, Ms. Robson, that I had a number of parents that were interested in joining into PTA and she said, oh, that's wonderful. And the parents told me that they weren't able to log on. So then I attempted to log on myself. The website was down. I reached out to the president of the PTA at that time. I reached out to Ms. Robson. I also spoke to the assistant. And they said, oh, the website is down. I said, well, okay, whether it, you know, whether it's down or not, I do have these parents who want to join. How about you let me know when the next meeting is going to be so then they can come and they can bring their $25? Oh, don't worry about it. You can just do it all online. They can do it all online. So long story short, I have an email chain of about a month's worth of emails, literally begging to, to allow these parents to join the PTA. And in the interim, they were speaking about the issue with black children not participating in Haven Help Us. And I told them that I, I used to participate in Haven Help Us and I would love to help them to recruit, you know, black children and see what we could do. And they said, oh, yes, we would love for you to help us to plan it. Time goes by. I kept reaching out, asking them when we were going to meet so we can plan Haven Help Us. Next thing you know, they said, oh, sorry, it's too late. We've already, you know, done all of the planning, maybe next year. Knowing that the next year, my daughter was going to be at ETHS. So I said, okay, well, what about all of the parents that wanted to join? They said, oh, well, you know, they have to do it through the website. I'm sorry, that's the only way they could do it. So fast forward, I went back and I spoke to those parents. And they said, that's what they've been doing to us all the time. We reach out to them. We are literally begging them to join. They never respond. They never do what they say they're going to do. And then we feel like we're begging to be a part of the PTA to be able to discuss our children's education. So, you know, knowing that I had just been back a few months at that point, half a year, and I had already started to experience that and had so many black parents telling me how they were being excluded from PTA. They weren't, they weren't being heard when they were trying to voice their, their, their concerns about their children and their children's safety in the schools. I had been reaching out to the then-superintendent, Superintendent Goran. I had met with him on numerous occasions to speak about the issues and he, you know, allowed me a number of hours to talk to him about the, the issues. But unfortunately, he's no longer here. I was then connected to Joaquin to speak about the same issues and Joaquin is no longer here. I also, when I was president of the Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee of District 65, you know, District 65 represents about 69 languages. And there were a lot of exclusionary practices in that group as well, excluding black parents. Because I don't know if you're aware that we do have a large black immigrant population here in Evanston within the black community. We have children from Haiti. We have children from different countries in Africa. We do have, you know, children from Jamaica, from Belize, from a lot of different nations that speak different languages and then also different dialects. And anytime I attempted to reach out to these families, I was told that because I did not work for the district, I didn't have the right to contact the parents. Even though some of the parents were coming to the meetings, signing up, providing their email addresses and phone numbers, indicating that they did want to receive information about any meetings that were to take place. And it was not just the black immigrant population. We also had at a couple of the meetings immigrants from China, because we do have a lot of Chinese students who are here with their children to go to school in District 65. They were also being excluded. One of the young men I ended up becoming friends with, he was in my seed cohort. And he said he stopped coming because they weren't helping him. I also met another couple that were from India and they spoke, no, they were from Pakistan and they spoke Urdu, which is another language represented in the, in the district. They said there was no point in them coming because they weren't receiving any type of language support. They weren't receiving any type of services. They weren't, anytime they had issues related to their children learning English, they didn't get any support. And I reached out to the two individuals that worked at the district that were working alongside with me, with BPAC, and just total shutout.
So what do you think is, is the main cause of the achievement gap? Because we've been hearing about the achievement gap for a very, very long time. And I know that District 65, Anya Tanya Vudi, I mean, she has been busting her tail to make progress in that area. And there is a lot of, all of what you're talking about, there's a lot of that going on that they go to battle with daily. The death threats are just beyond disturbing to me.
You're out of control.
Beyond disturbing to me. So if you come onto the board and you, you see the heat that they're getting right now just to give children a proper education, you know what I'm saying? What do you plan to do differently?
Well, the, in regards to the academic achievement gap, it's been proven year over year that the issue is literacy. So basically, the black children that are falling behind are having an issue with comprehending standard English, reading, writing, and comprehending the English language. And I had proposed during this past two years that I've been here, that many of our black children do not speak standard English at home. And that they too need language support, just like any other child who is considered an English language learner. And when I had spoken to Goran, when he was still the superintendent, I forwarded him the poem of Paul Lawrence Dunbar. Paul Lawrence Dunbar basically wrote this poem in what is considered African-American vernacular English, or other words, Ebonics. And he read it and then I ended up reading it to him. And I asked him if he understood what he was saying without me having to translate it and he told me he did not. And I said, that is the problem that many African-American children are having. At home, a lot of us live in the homes with our grandparents who speak that way. Sometimes even our parents speak that way. And when the, the children go off to school, they have difficulty understanding what they're being taught because it's not the way that they speak at home. Same thing when it comes to our children that come from the Caribbean. We have a large Jamaican population here. We have a large Haitian population. And they too, oftentimes at home, the children do not speak standard English. So if you take.
So what, what, what will that, what will that look like? Because, I mean, I grew up in a home where we spoke proper English. We spoke Ebonics. You know, I, I, I'm not quite sure I understand. What, what would that look like?
What would it look like? So if you, if you've ever, if you've ever seen the Tweak, the Tweak Program, where you have children that come from households that speak Spanish. And because their Spanish being, being spoken in the home, they are introduced to the English language by having someone who also understands and speaks Spanish. So therefore they're able to give these children proper language support because they're able to speak their language. Oftentimes, we have teachers who do not speak the language of our children and sometimes are not as patient as they should be when trying to help them to learn standard English. Sometimes our children, our children become frustrated. They sometimes become agitated when they are not understood and when they don't understand. And if we under, if we have already confirmed that the problem is that the children do not understand standard English and that this is the reason why there is an academic achievement gap, my question has been, why are these children not given the proper language support in order for them to succeed in comprehending the language? You cannot force a child into a STEM program if they're not understanding English. You have to understand the language. How can you fully understand science if you can't even understand the words that it's written in?
So that's what you think is the basis of the achievement gap is?
Absolutely. It's, it's actually documented. It's documented that the issue with the academic achievement gap, year over year, over decades, is literacy. It's all documented through District 65, through ISPE, nationwide. The academic achievement gap, as it pertains to black children in particular, is an issue of literacy. And it has been also with, with children who speak Spanish, but the Spanish-speaking children are getting language support.
Like the experience you explained with the parents in the PTA, them being left out. Do you think that plays a huge part? I mean, as in what's going on in the classroom? Because all children are kind, it doesn't matter what color, they're, they're, they're learning English, proper English in school. So we're learning that together. You know, the proper verb, proper noun, where it goes, adjectives. We're all learning that together. But somewhere there's a breakdown in how children of color are treated in the classroom. If they're celebrated when they do well, if they're ignored, if they're neglected. I take it back to history as well. If a child isn't prepared or know their foundation, their history, if they know their history, they tend to perform better because they're more confident in who they are.
Absolutely. What do you? Oftentimes, that confidence is taught at home. But you have to also keep in mind that our family structures are no longer the way that they were before. Even myself, growing up, my grandmother played a great role in helping to raise me and my sister. And, you know, I grew up in a time where we were taught to be proud of who we were. Not necessarily at school. It more, it more so took place at home. We also participated in programs at Family Focus and at that time, back in the eighties, Family Focus had all types of programs about African history, about African-American history, history of black people worldwide. We learned at Family Focus. We learned dances of Haiti. We learned African dance. So we had that community, which we often refer to as the village, that helped to reinforce who we were as people. And we already knew who we were and were proud of who we were once we arrived at school. What you'll find today is that you don't, we don't really have that same connection with our elders like before. And, you know, sometimes we have younger parents who don't really have the time or we have parents who don't really have the time to put their, or can't afford to put their children in, in an enrichment program. Or maybe they don't live near Family Focus or their children won't go there. You'll find that they are often the children that are left behind because when they arrive at school, they do not have a sense of self-worth and pride in who they are. So when someone questions their capabilities based on their race, when someone questions, you know, any information that the child might provide simply because they believe that, oh, well, they don't know what they're talking about because it's a black child, then the child starts to second guess themselves. Me in particular, I remember at the age of nine, I was at Lincolnwood and one of my teachers refused to call me by my name. She refused to learn how to pronounce it, even though my mother had told her numerous times how to pronounce it. Her name was Mrs. Hughes. And I told my mother and I said, my mother said, did she call you by your name today? I said, no, she said in front of the class, if I don't respond, then I was going to get in trouble. So I went home and I told my mother. And my mother said, I'm going to try one more time. She said, you go back to that school and you tell her how to pronounce your name. If she refuses, I'm going to be there. And she didn't say my name. And my mother showed up at the school. And she let her know, you're not going to disrespect my child. My daughter's name is Dona. It means queen and you need to learn how to say it. And after that, my mother spoke to Mr. Nieman, who was the principal at that time, who was actually a childhood friend of my mother's, who, they went to ETHS together. And that issue was resolved. But how many black children like myself do not have that parent who can go to the school and, you know, advocate for their child? So many don't have the time. So what we find ourselves with today is unfortunately, we have numerous black children who do not have a parent or a community member that is there that can advocate for them, to be like liaison between the household and the school. So what I would like, what I want to be and what I will be, once I'm elected, is to be that liaison between our community and the school. We have so many children who, sometimes they have no one that can advocate for them. So we need people who understand our community, understand our households, understand that some people might not have it all together, but it doesn't mean that they don't love their children. And sometimes we can, you know, some of us can become frustrated when we're trying to advocate and we allow our emotions to take over. So what we need are community members that are willing to step up for these children when their parents aren't able. While they're getting themselves together, we need to be there to advocate for these children at the school level to make sure that these children are not forgotten. Because if not, they're going to continue to fail because that's what's been happening. We keep hiring more and more people attempting to address this issue, but none of these people are reaching out to these black families. They're not reaching out. And even when you speak to families, they're saying.
How do you, I'm sorry, how do you plan to reach out? Because that's, that's been an issue for a lot of city officials, people sitting at the dais, no matter where you are in Evanston. It's, they can't get, they can't get the engagement with the community. And some really try and some really don't put forth the effort. With these programs that you're talking about, you know, then that gets into budgeting. So of course, you know, well, how do you intend to pay for all, all of this with our budget to change things? And, and I think that's why they're getting the death, that's why they're getting the death threats is because they are trying to create what it is that you're talking about. But you have that, that group that are fighting against them. So.
Both issues.
You implement that in terms of, of the budget, because you know that that's going to come up.
The budget is actually a huge issue. So if you take a look, if you had a chance to take a look at the budget, I looked at the most recent and the one previous, the previous budget. And what they have to do is reallocate funds. You know, what, there, the amount of money, you know, even though I mentioned additional language support for black children, if they take money from all of their efforts for the equity training, which is in order to allow them to support these children, if they would stop spending so much on that and put it actually in a program that can help these children, then they wouldn't have to raise taxes to get more money. There are a lot of, there's a lot of spending that has been taking place that is unnecessary. There has been a lot of spending over a number of years that basically, well, if you look at the budget, you'll notice that money has been placed in places that they should not. And if you had people on the board, and I'm not saying that I don't know the capabilities of all of the people that are on the board as it relates to finances, but if you have anyone that understands how to budget, even if you know, if I have a hundred dollars, I'm going to spend $60 on food, $20 for gas, and then I'll save the remaining amount. But you have currently a board that says, I have a hundred dollars, I'm going to spend $200 and then we're going to try and get tax money in order to be able to spend, to spend another $300. That doesn't make sense. Because every time they come up with these different programs, they come up with these different initiatives, they are hiring new people. Every time you're hiring new people to address these issues that are longstanding, but the people are not resolving the issues, but they've shelled out another $170,000 for another new hire who is supposed to be addressing the same issues that persist.
Have you, have you worked with District 65 with this new superintendent and with Anya Tanya Vudi as president? Have you gone to work with them?
Well, Dr. Horton just got here.
Right, right.
He just got here. Yeah. So he's, and he's been quite busy since, since his arrival. He's been very busy, you know, speaking to the Wall Street Journal and doing a number of different meetings. But as far as the current budget, I can talk to them about it, but it's already in place. Which is why new people are needed on the board to say, okay, this is what you guys agreed upon. What is happening? You put this amount of money in this. What is the result?
Have you, like, have you met with the board in terms of some changes? Have you met with Anya or any of the other board members in terms of just changes that you would like to see for the next budget? Or what things you can.
Well, that's.
Committing now?
Well, that's why I'm running. Because since they are board members and their job is to be liaison between the community and the district and also make sure that they hire a superintendent that has our community and our children's best interest at heart, I believed that since they were on the board, they would already have the capability of understanding if a goal is set and a plan is made, then you have to be able to follow through and eventually execute on the initial plan that was set. But what's been taking place is goals have been set and more goals have been set. And there have been numerous conversations about attacks toward the board. We do understand that that's very, those are very, very negative things that are taking place. But at the same time, when the conversations are had about budget, the response has been, the budget, they've had to spend money in order to deal with the issues of anti-racism. They've had to spend money in order to deal with the issues of inequity. Yes, that money is needed to, you know, to, to help to address those issues. But if you're continuously spending and there's no result, then maybe you should spend it in a different manner. Take a look at what you've been spending money on and say to yourself, well, you know what? That's not working. How about we do it differently next time? And that's the issue. That's why they continue to be in the red. That's why there are conversations right now about cutting jobs, you know, having to lay people off because of the budget. There are also conversations about raising taxes again in order to address the, the district's deficit. There are also conversations about raising taxes again in order to address the, the district's deficit. And if they were fiscally responsible, those conversations would not have to, have to be had.
Okay. Um, we have, um, some viewers on. If anyone has any questions, feel free to use the raise your hand signal. Or type a question in the chat. If you have a question for Indona. Okay, Indona, so District six, that's, I'm hearing everything, I'm hearing everything that you're saying, absolutely. Um, and I find it interesting, like Alderman Fleming was saying for the past few years, if you don't like the way things are running, then why don't you run? And I swear I've been saying it all month. People really did answer the call because we are overwhelmed with candidates. I'm trying to make sure that I get everybody in. Um. My, my question too, um, about some of the candidates is, is just wondering. I'm glad people are, are running, um. But did they, did they really try to help the existing board or council? Because maybe people can move their goals, the goal mark can move all the time. And I'm, you are a woman with a lot of vision and definitely a lot of power and energy. Um, it just seemed like it, you should have been one of the first to sit down with Horton and, and Anya and like, okay, I've seen the goals. Let me drop some nuggets in your ear about what I think is best and we'll work with the budget.
At the current board believes that what they've done thus far has been good, has been equitable. So if you, if we just look at just the academic achievement gap alone. It's actually increased since this new board. The academic achievement gap has not gone down. It continues to increase. They're, you know, doing a lot of equity, inclusion and diversity work, which is amazing. I love it. We, we definitely do need it. But when you are touting yourself as being a board that's all for equity, inclusion and diversity. And you want to make sure that all of the children succeed. And then you have the academic achievement gap of black children increasing year over year. And many, um, language learners who are Asian leaving the district. Because they feel excluded. We have, we have had Indian and Chinese, um, residents leaving the district because they felt excluded. So if the equity, inclusion and diversity was truly working, why are the black children continuously failing? And why are other immigrants leaving the city if they were actually being included? It's one thing to say something, but it's another thing to actually take action. I do commend all of the work that they've done thus far, as far as, um, getting Dr. Horton. I do believe that they have good intentions. But maybe they just need extra help, you know, like from someone such as myself, who does understand budgets. Who does have a direct connection to the community that is affected. Because I, from what I understand, the people that are currently on the board don't actually have any connections to the community here. I've, I grew up here. My family's been in Evanston for over a hundred years.
What do you mean connections to the community?
Meaning that, you know, it's, it's, imagine if I were to just show up in Rome. And say, okay, I want to make all of these changes for the children of Rome. And I've never spoken to the parents of Rome. And I've never even reached out to the children of Rome. How would I know what their needs were if I've never spoken to them? It's the same thing in Evanston. If you've never actually reached out to the children and the families who are affected. You'll understand truly why there's an academic achievement gap. It's not just what's taking place at school. Sometimes there are issues in the home and in the community. But our job is not to shame parents. Our job is to support them. And to help to support their children so their children can do well. What we have had is a history of people shaming the parents. Sometimes, you know, you have young parents who are overwhelmed. They have multiple children, they have work, sometimes they're in school. And they don't have time to sit and do the homework with their children, but it does not mean that they do not love their kids. But we have people literally saying, oh, the black parents, they're not reading to their children. Oh, you know, the black parents don't show up. But they don't even know the, the, the condition, the conditions that the children are living in. So what I would like to do is to be that liaison, knowing the issues that are taking place in the household. Not having to divulge that to the district, but helping to find resources for those parents. To be able to properly support those children so that there's enough stability that they can learn. And that's what's missing, the lack of, of empathy. And we've been hiring the district, yes, they've hired more black people. That's great. But just because you hire someone that's black does not necessarily mean that that black person has those black children, you know, in, you know, their best interest at heart. We know that as black people, that's not always the case. We do have some among us that look down on our own black children.
I heard you say in the, uh, Democratic Party of Evanston interview that, um, all people of color are not for.
Not all, not all skinfolk are skinfolk. Because I've, I've had conversations unfortunately with some black people. And they say, oh, you know, it's because their parents aren't doing what they need to do. They're not, you know, it's not my fault their kids are failing. My kids are doing good. But we can't live that way. We can't. We even have people in our own community looking down at those parents who are struggling. And just letting it happen. And I've also seen that with some of the black people that they've hired. And it's sad that I have had meetings with people who, when I told them about the academic achievement gap and black parents refusing to send their children to Haven, to send them elsewhere. Because they felt that they would not be wanted there. This particular person was surprised. Oh, where did you, where did you hear that? And that's very hurtful. Knowing that that person was hired because black people and our allies pleaded with the district to find more black educators, more black leaders. But some of them, they look down on these children that are in need. And that's not right.
So your plan, your vision is to clean house of that. Get them on budget, make sure that they're spending money on programs that will be helpful with the.
That are necessary.
Yes. And, and what are some other visions that you have for District sixty-five?
So base, the budget is the most important and also getting the black children back on track. As well as there's an issue with history in our district. And that's something that I know that you're working on, working on, you know, making sure that the history of, of black people is told correctly in our schools.
Oh, and I do want to announce, just last night, they voted on those bills, the Black Caucus Agenda, everyone. And it has been moved to Pritzker's desk. It's on the governor's desk right now to sign. So we still have to hope and pray that it's signed. So it will be state law. We're praying that, um, children will have to learn the history of black people.
That's amazing. We need it because even when it comes to the curriculum, there are a number of things that have changed over the years. You know, they have, we do, they've, you know, eliminated certain courses. Um, because I'd also spoken about advocating for children with special needs. And the special needs children are not just those that aren't at grade level, but also children that are gifted. And recently, District sixty-five has decided to remove what they call acceler- accelerated courses. So there are math courses that enable children who are advanced in math to take a level above. That's been removed. And the reason, if you even go to District sixty-five's website, they state the reason they have eliminated that is due to the lack of diversity. Now, if our black children are having issues with understanding the English language. How can we attempt to try and push them into an accelerated math class? If they're already having problems with reading and writing, basic arithmetic. We have to work on making sure that they can do the basics first before we can put them into the accelerated math classes. But we still need to keep those type of courses because we do have black children that are capable of doing the work.
Most definitely.
And, you know, when they say that they're eliminating it due to a lack of diversity, then that causes more tension in our community. Where people are saying, well, I want my child to take this class, but now yet again, because of black and brown children, they're removing something that could have helped the entire community. So we as a community, we need to, you know, help our children to be more prepared for learning. Whether it's English, math, science and even history. We have to step up our game because we are basically failing our kids. We're failing our children at District sixty-five. And then when they get to District two oh two, they're trying to push them into A P classes. When many of them aren't prepared to do the coursework, it's been proven at the District two oh two level that the number of black children and brown children have increased in the A P classes. But the test scores for the black children have declined. So what they're doing is just recruiting more and more black kids, black bodies, that some of them aren't capable of doing the work. And to me, in my opinion, it's a way of setting up black children to fail. You know, why tell the parents you have to put them in A P? There's nothing wrong with taking, taking a regular class. And doing well in that and getting an A in that. Just like it's, it's an amazing thing for the child to take A P courses, yes. But if you're not prepared, it's all right to take a standard class. I have two children who are extremely different, like night and day. My son is in all A P and honors classes and honor, or in earned honors courses. My daughter is not. My daughter has an I E P and she needs extra support. And I'm not going to say, I'm gonna take her and place her in A P just because I want her there. If I just do that, knowing that she's not prepared for that level of rigor, I'm setting my daughter up to fail. But then they're shaming black parents and saying, oh, no, you have to do this because we need to increase the numbers. But then they increase the numbers and the children are still failing. It makes no sense. So we have to make sure we work on the curriculum, we work on the proper preparedness for the courses for these children. And we work on making sure that no one is excluded from anything, be it programs offered by the school. Added support that's actually currently included in the budget. Because a lot of these programs for support are included in the budget. There are a lot of partnerships that the district has with people from, with organizations outside. You can get a tutor for free. You don't have to pay. A lot of people say, oh, only wealthy people can have tutors. That's not true. There are tutors that come for free. There are students at Northwestern that tutor for free. There are programs.
Have this tutoring program? Again, it's, um, sometimes I just think parents don't get that information. They don't understand what all is a available to them.
Absolutely. Which is why I believe I belong there because I know that all of these things are available.
How will you get out and reach everyone in the community that has a child in sixty-five? What, what is your plan? Because, uh, that, if you can tell us that plan, I will bow down.
Well, you do know I have my little grassroots organization, Our Village is a Black Evanstonian. And with, with that, I reach out to people. Um, initially, when we started it, it started as a group that was only for legacy black Evanstonians. Meaning that your family had to be here at least three generations or more. And we found that by doing that, we were excluding a whole swath.
Excluding.
Absolutely. So what I said was, no, we need to include some of our new people, well, all of them. Um, because all of us need resources. All of us need to support one another to make sure that we all succeed. We cannot guarantee that if we're excluding people. So I've been doing a lot of community outreach. I've been doing different activities. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we can't get together and eat and hang out. But I've, I'm still reaching out to people. Uh, most recently, we gave dinners away for Thanksgiving over at the Jerk Pit. Which is owned bar, uh, by our Jamaican friends over at the Jerk Pit right on Main Street. Um, and, you know, reaching out to the different segments of our.
Programming as you were handing out food?
Pardon me?
Were you talking to them about programming as you were handing out food?
No, I was just telling them about the organization and just telling them how we were there to support them. And that in the future, we're going to be looking to, uh, provide more food services. Because the majority of the people that we serviced that day were homeless. Or, um, what are they called? Inadequate, inadequate, inadequately housed. Um, you know, a segment of our community that I was not aware of. Like, I do know that there are people that are couch surfing. That I know. I never thought there was anything wrong with that, you know. But, um, there are people that are actually living in a homeless shelter here in Evanston who attend our schools. Um, most of our, our, um, the people that we gave food away to are living in the homeless shelter on Oak. And some of them are actually living in their vehicles. So, you know, services that we'll be offering are, you know, outreach to not just that community. But the entire community, but there's a, um, a heightened need within the black community to provide support, uh, when it comes to, uh, food instability, food insecurity, they call it. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's a.
Indona, your, uh, computer froze. Okay, it doesn't look like she's popping back in here, so, um, we're gonna end. We actually did go over, but I truly feel District sixty-five is very, very important information, so, um, I don't mind going over. But thank you all for your time this evening. And, uh, that was Indona. Uh, Moonboy Yai, make sure I say it correctly. Uh, she is running for District sixty-five board and please look her up on Facebook. Um, I believe she put her Facebook, well, she put her hashtag, Indona for D sixty-five and she said her Facebook will pop up. No, it was recording. I paused it when her reception went down. And then I restarted the, the recording. Um, I just wanted to see if she was going to, uh, come back to us. But, um, yeah, so you all, please be sure to, uh, get in touch with Indona if you have questions. You need her to elaborate more on her responses today, on her, uh, vision, her platform. Again, that's hashtag Indona for D sixty-five, okay? And please join us again. We will have the mayoral forum this Thursday at seven P M. Uh, we will have the District sixty-five forum on January twentieth, and then we have the Fifth Ward Forum, January twenty-first. And we will have individual, um, interviews with the other District sixty-five candidates. Uh, going into February, for the rest of this month, going into February. There's a lot of candidates. So thank you all so much. Oh, I think Indona did rejoin us. She's muted. Just want to say goodbye, Indona. I, we missed your last part. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, okay. Um, I was just wrapping up, letting people know where they can contact you uh, with questions and, um, and how to support you in your platform and to hear more about your platform. Um, is there any last words you want to say? Because you froze. Um, is there any last words you want to say? Cuz you froze, so we didn't get, get your last message out to the people.
Well, I just want to say that the reason why I'm running is because I feel that um, there are some things that need to be addressed in the district, which are mainly the budget. Um, support for language learners as well as addressing the academic achievement gap for the black children. And if they like, find out more, they can of course go to my Facebook page, which is a hashtag Indona, number four, D six five. And that's the easiest way to find me and information about my candidacy.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Indona. You know that I adore you and are supposed to be teaching me French. All right. Thank you so much, Indona. Thank you, thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, Kai. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who joined us tonight. Thank you. This has been Malika Evanston Live TV, and please stay tuned for more. We have more candidates coming up. Get to know them, get to hear more about their vision, their platform. Engage and get involved, participate, ask them questions um right here on Evanston Live TV. Good night.